Good evening, welcome to the Southbridge Town Council, Special Town Council Meeting of Thursday, September 19th, 2019 at 7:00 PM. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, never be opposed to its law.
Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Counselor Adams?
Present.
Counselor Daniel?
Present.
Sorry, she printed me old sheets, so I have the wrong names.
Oh, sorry.
Counselor Katrona?
Present.
Counselor, I have other ones with me, I think.
Oh, that's, that's all right, just-
I feel bad, sorry.
That's all right, just go by, go by the-
Counselor Marquetti?
I'm here.
Counselor Steves?
Here, present.
Counselor Nash?
Present.
Counselor Jovan?
Present. Counsel, counsel manner is excused this evening, and I have no idea what the status of Counsel Alazo is at this time.
Okay.
Okay, we do have a, a form, Chairman's announcements, I just want to thank my fellow counselors for coming here for the Special Town Council Meeting tonight. As we stated, I think at the outset in July, that we would probably have a series of Special Town Council Meetings to take up items that we have pending. This is one of the first ones relative to the recreational adult-use marijuana, as well as trying to get a solid transfer policy of some sort, so that the Finance Department can function within what our rules and parameters of the Charter. My other announcement that I just have tonight is to a resident or a fellow, the former town manager, Michael Coughlin, has sent out a letter, he's been all over social media about the, setting up a memorial for a 9/11 for first responders that had come from the town of Southbridge to New York. I think it's a, one item that we should really definitely take a look at, I just want to acknowledge that I did receive that memo, I've acknowledged it with him, he's sharing it all over the place, so I wanted him to know. I did get a message from the Police Chief, Chief Woodson, who wanted to talk to me a little bit further about that, I have that set up to meet with him tomorrow morning, and I'll probably have more announcements on Monday, and everything else I'll hold over until Monday. Citizen form, if there's anyone from the audience that wishes to address the council on any item that's not on the agenda tonight, which the two agenda items are recreational marijuana and transfer policy. Just state your name and your address, please.
My name is Andrew Murch, and I reside at 101 High Street, in the second-floor apartment. One, last night, my son Talison brought home his first homework assignment with a textbook, and that textbook, when I look at it, was in pretty poor condition, and I look at the copyright date, it was printed in 2008. So I've got my fifth-grade son learning from a book that was printed the same year I graduated high school, and I hear that the Education and Human Services Subcommittee voted no recommendation on additional funding to the school system. I don't understand where we have old resources that need to be updated throughout the system, barring any of the severe complexities of the issues we have through the system. I don't understand where we need additional resources that are more modern in order to teach our kids proper information, and everybody knows this throughout the town, parents know this, community members know this, and I just don't understand, and it's disappointing to see that, to hear that EHS voted no recommendation, so I'm just going to say that I hope that when this does come to the Town Council for a vote, that the council as a whole votes yes for that funding to go to the school system. I think it's going to be, it's not going to be a drastic change, it's a drop in the bucket when you look at the budget, but it's definitely additional resources that could be utilized to improve textbooks that we have, because I'm 29-years-old, a book that's almost a third of old, as old as I am, my son should not be learning from that, it should be way more modernized than a decade ago. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Murch, I'll let the town manager respond in a second. Yes, it is true that the Education and Human Services had a meeting the other night relative to requests for the additional Chapter 70 monies to come to the school system, that first step is to always vet things through a subcommittee, the subcommittee did vote a negative recommendation to the council, however, I'll kind of show you there was no request for any items, textbooks, or anything like that, it was strictly personnel, so I'm not sure, you know, conveying a message to the superintendent, the receiver, but it will be on the October 7th meeting that the full council will be taking up the question of the additional school spending. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I kind of want to go along with what you said, the school receiver back a couple of years ago came to the council looking for, I believe, both science and math books, and we funded those, the town council funded those requests for those books. Since then, we have not received any further requests for, specifically for books, we have passed our regular budget, which obviously they can buy books from, and again, as the chairman said, the money that was requested recently, the additional $173-plus-thousand, the conversation that was had by the receiver fell along the lines of labor-type issues, as the chair said, so you can't really blame the council for not voting for something that was never requested, so I think you really need to meet with the school receiver and get him to bring forward a proposal, if he needs books or something, he has to bring those issues to our attention for us to even have the potential to vote on them.
So, just for the record, Mr. Murch, we don't entertain debate, I'll welcome you for your follow-up comment, but this is not a forum for debate, we take your comments under advisement, but go ahead, Mr. Murch.
So, I should have been a little bit more clear, because I was aware of that, but as far as it was for personnel, but when I talk about this, this is other money that, this is money that helps with additional resources, personnel are a resource, that was all I was trying to convey, and I guess I didn't speak clearly, so for that, I do apologize, but thank you very much for entertaining that, I greatly appreciate it, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Murch, I certainly understand that, I think we took it as textbooks, I mean, those, 2008, those were under, I was chairman of the school committee at that time, we, the town and the school committee invested a lot of money in textbooks, it's, and we had a whole revision plan that was outlined over five years at that time, I'm not sure what transpired in the years that I've been gone, but we had a robust plan to replace textbooks, so we'll convey that message to the receiver. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the council?
Good evening, Mike Murray, Lynn Lane. Tonight, I'm before you to share my concerns about the International Club operating a business model of a nightclub that is completely unfitting for a residential neighborhood. This club is not operating as the same social club that the longstanding VFW model operated as, yet somehow, they have a liquor license to do so anyways, and I see that as a big problem. The whole purchase, process of them building, buying the building, purchasing, and getting the license, and getting established, happened without real notification to the neighborhoods, I'm sure they put in legal things in the paper, but who sees those? Who sees a liquor license board when they meet at 1:00, if you're not a businessman and he needs to be there? You're at work, you don't see those things. But, had we known about it, we would have opposed it, because our peace is being disturbed, and that is exactly what's happened since they started operating, and they have made for a miserable summer, in my neighborhood, and the meetings surrounding neighborhoods. I can't imagine living in the houses right next door to that location, because it's so loud where I live. I can only imagine the scene from the Clockwork Orange movie where they're being tortured with music, because that's what it feels like. The International Club is basically operating obnoxiously and without any regard to its neighbors. Worse than the noise that starts to pick up and get louder at 11:00, because that's when they start having live entertainment at 11:00 PM in a residential neighborhood, they're going to do that again this Saturday. They also have permanent events, and these are worse, because they're outside. These weekend events go all day, the loudest and the most obnoxious one was this Sunday, 9:15. They were granted a permit by the Liquor Licensing Board to serve outside from 12:00 noon to 8:00 PM, and despite numerous calls to the Police Department from several different people, it was allowed to simply go on, simply because they had a permit. Their permit was seen as more important than all the neighbors' rights to not have their peace disturbed, which it certainly was. With windows closed, the vibrations could be felt and the noise heard loudly inside homes, a neighborhood toddler couldn't successfully put down for their nap and was deprived of their sleep. A resident in the neighborhood doing yard chores was complained about because his chainsaw was affecting their music. That is completely inconsiderate, this poily-placed business in a residential neighborhood, and tells you everything you need to know about how little they care about the neighborhood they continue to audibly assault. Complaints today have done nothing to curb these events, and the noise levels coming from the club. I have never officially complained before this weekend's excessive noise, but now I am, this has to stop. I looked into this permit and saw that the International Club was advertising this event weeks before their permit was even approved, all the while while facing a public hearing for an unlawful sale or delivery to a minor from an event held back on 5/4 that spilled into the evening of 5/5 and had a police dispatch for disturbance at 12:44 AM in a residential neighborhood. If you haven't read the minutes of that public hearing, Agenda 8, I strongly recommend you do, because it highlights a lot of different things, it highlights safety concerns and many other issues. Letting drunk underage partygoers into their function room, starting at 6:00 PM, ending at midnight, with cleanup afterwards, somehow, a minor was allowed in, allegedly who pre-gamed, allegedly who drank before they got there, who allegedly was still drunk six hours later at midnight, I don't know how that happens, but having the police call at 12:44 in the morning, having neighbors come out of their house to see a beat-down that was happening spilling out of this club into Everett Street. So what I want to know is, I'm sure that most of this files on the Liquor Licensing Board, but I want to make you aware of it, and I would like to find out some of the following. That testimony from that hearing says that complaints have been going on since May, yet the Liquor License Board approved their outdoor permit. What has to be done here to ensure the future peace of the residents of this neighborhood? Who approves their hours of operation and entertainment? Who monitors their noise levels in a residential neighborhood? Who allowed an obnoxious nightclub operation where it once was a respectable social club? What can be done about it now that they have approval and complaints are going nowhere? And, one of the things that was really thrown by that 8:15 report, do they actually have a hot tub on-site? It's mentioned. So, also in those minutes of that hearing, the owner said he wasn't making any money, any profit off his liquor license, so to him, I say, if that's true, why don't you just stick to your other successful businesses and stop being obnoxious and inconsiderate to the people living in the neighborhood? Just let this apparently failing and unhappy experiment end for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. We will, town manager's heard your complaints, the council has no say on a liquor license, it's strictly, they are quasi-judicial board, that is their purview, we will definitely have the town manager follow up through, for the Liquor License Board and make sure that your concerns are conveyed, we'll also follow that up to the Police Department to make sure, have the town manager to work with the Police Chief to ensure that whatever needs to be done will be done, and whatever licenses are out of the town manager's office in their purview, I'm sure that they will take a look at all reports, okay? I mean, I'm sorry, I can't give you more, we don't have any authority over that, that's strictly what our purview is, we, I do appreciate your complaints, because I did get a couple phone calls myself, referring to the Police Department as well, and we'll have the town manager follow up with the Police Chief. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just a brief comment, the chair is correct, the power lies under the Liquor Licensing Board, but your, yours and your neighbors' concerns have been heard, because I've been party to numerous emails with the Police Department, at least two, maybe three counselors reached out to me about this issue, I reached out to the Police Chief, the Police Chief has expressed serious concerns about the one-day liquor licenses and the type of event you're describing, he is going to make an issue of that at the next Liquor Board meeting, so they are already following up and moving forward on the complaints of the residents, and the chief, from what I read, his position agrees with the residents.
That's, that's good to hear, because when you're told they have a permit, there's nothing you can do, when you're, you can't sleep, you can't think, you can't, anything, that's, their permit should not override our right to peace.
Definitely. Okay, thank you. Counselor Marquetti?
I also received a call Sunday night concerning the International Club. I don't know how someone could get a permit to disturb the peace and quiet of a residential community. I drove by there, and the noise was unacceptable. I realize you're saying that the Liquor Board is a quasi-judicial, but they are an appointed board, and we are an elected board, so I believe we do have the authority over the Liquor Licensing Board, or any quasi-judicial board, it's only the town manager that doesn't have the authority over these quasi-judicial boards. That's how I look at it, I see Counselor Steve shaking his head, I know he's an authority on this stuff, but that's how I look at it, so thank you.
Thank you. We can have further discussion off, on that, I think, a little more research as to, you are correct that the council would confirm an appointment, but that appointment is made by the town manager, so therefore, we do not have direct control over an appointed board, directly, okay?
I respectfully disagree.
I'm not going to debate that, right, that, huh? Okay. We do take those concerns seriously, and we'll follow up in the appropriate forums. Is there anyone else? Step to the microphone, state your name and your address, please. That's okay, just put the mic down, just state your name and your address for the record.
My name is Patricia Saunders, 53 Laurel Hill Road in Southbridge, I live opposite of the bar Mike was talking about, and right on the other side of the brook is a hill and my house. I have children, I have pets, there are senior neighbors that had to lock themselves in during this concert they had, it went on too long, it went on, it was very loud, the police officers said they couldn't do anything because they had a permit, nobody mentioned the decimal meter, nobody measured the loudness of this band, it was just out of control, my house was shaking, my puppies wouldn't go outside to go to the bathroom, this is scary for the children in the area, what this brings in, this is an outdoor bar, this is drinking, drugs, just partying, and it went on all day, I can see four hours, all day, 1 to 8 o'clock at night, it shut down early because of all of us calling and complaining, but these kids had school the next day. I, I don't understand how this could happen, this is, I mean, we live in single-family houses opposite of the brook, and my neighbor sits out on her porch and she reads every Sunday, she wasn't out there. It's just very disturbing, you know, people have Sunday off to relax, and the football game was on, we couldn't hear it, it was bad, I wish somebody would do something about this. A permit means, yes, they could do this, but to an extent, okay? Even I know about decimal readers, you know, something needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your comments, and again, we will go through the appropriate channels to make sure that those complaints are handled, and whatever information we can report back, if we have some information early on Monday, we can report back of what has been transpired, we'll definitely do it Monday night, if not, it will be handled through the appropriate forum.
I'm not a police department member, that's what I'm saying.
So, thank you, thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the council? Step to the mic, state your name and your address, please.
My name is David Flanders, I live on 20 of Lynn Lane, right next to her, I'm right across the creek from the bar, and their speakers are basically aimed at my house. I called the Police Department at least three or four times in any event, I have to shut the windows, and basically where air plugs is, is basically shaking.
Can you, lift up the mic, because they can't hear you.
Yep, so basically, I have to get air plugs to, basically to drown out the noise, and the police response every time is, you can't do anything, the town approved it, even at late nights, I can see here a racket, you know, they're dumping trash in the creek, they're urinating in the creek, this is a residential neighborhood, they should not be allowed to do that, and I was cutting down trees on, on that event on Sunday, and I could get in trouble for making noise, because I'm disturbing them, I'm sorry, but that's not acceptable, you know, it needs to be something done, you know, you know, I see people near the creek, have some of these drunken falls in the creek and drowns, you know, they are urinating, they are kicking trash in there, so it is a safety concern for the neighborhood, I just want to let you guys know, okay?
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else wish to address the council? Anyone, seeing none? Move on for the two items that we're here for tonight. One, discuss the results of the town-wide vote at the June, June Town Election on the repeal of Section 7-509 Code of Bylaws, the prohibition of adult use and recreational marijuana establishments in its entirety, and permit within the town of Southbridge marijuana establishments as defined in Section 1 of Mass. General Law, Chapter 94G, including adult-use marijuana cultivators, marijuana testing facilities, marijuana product manufacturers, marijuana retailers, and any other type of adult-use marijuana establishments authorized under Chapter 94G. For my fellow counselors that were here last, you'll see that that is the exact language that we put on the ballot, I just wanted to make sure it was clear when we posted this meeting, people knew what we were talking about. So, the reason for the meeting tonight is, the town did vote, and for the new counselors and the public, just a background on this, I believe in 2016, under the state ballot, it was whether we would allow, or the Commonwealth of Massachusetts should allow recreational adult-use marijuana, and each town, by vote, if you voted in the affirmative, that would mean that you would allow it. The town of Southbridge Town Council in 2017 put forward a measures to the public about prohibiting those establishments in the town of Southbridge, and based on the vote on that, they drafted bylaws which prohibited the use of adult-use marijuana for all those subsections. There was a lot of discussion throughout the year when the, we had, looked at medical marijuana facilities, which was totally allowable under the law, and there was a lot of conversation at that time about what would it look like if we were to look at recreational adult-use marijuana facilities, the sale cultivation, and that, given the fact that a lot has changed since 2016. So, by vote of the council, that language was put forward on the town ballot to see, while the town council could have simply made the decision on its own to repeal the bylaw, the council, the last sitting council had decided, and as chair, I felt that strongly that we should put the vote out to the public again, to see what the sense was, was there a change in attitudes, to put it out to the voters, to give us some advisory vote to say, yes, this is something that we want. That vote did pass that the townspeople wanted us to consider repealing this bylaw. So, that's pretty much where we're at tonight, that's the discussion piece on that, for any of my fellow counselors, I know Counselor Adams has been very involved in this, Counselor Steves, if you have any comments that you want to make under this section, or we move to the next, and actually have an agenda item to fully discuss it. Thoughts? Y'all set? All right, so we'll go to the agenda item, and then we can talk about it. Item 6, vote to repeal, amend, or take any action thereof on Section 7-509 Code of Bylaws, the prohibition on the adult-use recreational marijuana establishments in its entirety, and permit within the town of Southbridge marijuana establishments as defined in Section 1 of Mass. General Law, Chapter 94G, and including adult-use marijuana cultivators, marijuana testing facilities, marijuana product manufacturers, marijuana retailers, and any other type of adult-use marijuana establishments authorized under Chapter 94G. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
Second. Discussion.
Could I have a clarification?
Yes, sir.
Are we repealing, amending, or what?
Thank you. We can take any such action, so it includes up to-
But the motion is to take any action?
Take, take any action thereof, yep. Yep.
Well, maybe we should clarify, then, I would move to repeal and replace.
I put this, I put this up for discussion purposes, we can offer amendments, like we can, so the discussion piece would be, first off, so a repeal would simply remove it in its entirety by the bylaws, most towns, from my research, do not have general bylaws on it, it's all under the zoning, which we do know that the zoning board has a public hearing next week scheduled, on, that we refer it back to the zoning board-
Planning board.
Uh, planning board, yes, I'm sorry.
We're doing a joint agreement with-
Planning board, not zoning. Planning board with the zoning.
Yes.
Sorry, thank you, counselor. Planning board and the council will have a public hearing next week on the zoning, and that, at that point, we can have comments on the zoning portion of it. I just put simply whether we repeal, amend, or take any action, just in case we wanted to amend or replace, I think repeal is probably the easiest, cleanest way to do it, and then we do everything through the zoning bylaws, but that's up to my council, fellow councils. Comments, you have some, Counselor Steve?
I would tend to agree that that seems to make the most sense, especially considering we've got all of the stuff that was, the medical bylaws were all in there as well, and, and the only real reason this ended up in the general bylaws was because of the ballot vote. You know, since, since this kind of preempted all of the zoning that, that they're now, the planning board is now working on, it, it made sense at the time to have this in the general bylaws, but we don't need it anymore, since the towns, the towns' voters told us to get rid of it, so let's get rid of it.
Thank you. Counselor Adams?
So, thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, and I agree with the counselor, as far as being in a general bylaw, I think the repeal probably, like you had mentioned, is probably the easiest and cleanest way to go about doing it, especially it's that the bylaw, the zoning bylaw is going to go next week with the public hearing, pending, obviously, vote this evening, and I'm highly recommending this to actually repeal it, if we have to amend our wording here, that's fine later on, but I highly recommend that we repeal it. Also, one thing that was discussed about this was, at the very end, and I'll put this in the amendment as well, or at least recommend it, pending passage of zoning bylaw, at the very end.
Okay. Comments? Am I missing something, Counselor Nash? I see Counselor Steve's looking something up, and I know you reflected to him.
I'm curious, since he has bylaws and charter in front of him, to know if we need a two-thirds majority to repeal as we do to enact.
You need two-thirds to enact a zoning bylaw, not a general bylaw, so-
I don't think it requires two-thirds majority.
Right, and so that, thank you for bringing that up, because I had talked to Counselor Adams earlier about this, I had seen a advisory by Patrini and Associates PC, it was through the MMA, MMA website, through some of this, and I printed out, "What Cities Can Do to Regulate Adult-Use Marijuana." So, what it did say was, you can enact and amend general ordinances and, through the general bylaws, or you could through the zoning. The easier way was to do it through the general bylaws, because it was a simple majority vote, but through the zoning, it's a two-thirds. So, that, that was the caveat that they had on that. I believe my, my stance on this, we should make it harder to amend any, if we put in a general bylaw as a simple majority, it can easily be changed, I think something of this substantial should be hard to amend, change, that you would require two-thirds vote, that's my personal opinion, so that's why I think it's better to go through the zoning aspect as opposed to the general bylaws. Thank you for bringing that up, but that is, that was in the advisory opinion, so. Counselor Steves?
I just wanted to-
Um, I just wanted to say that I agree with your basic concept. I think that the whole point of the two-thirds majority for zoning bylaws, by the way, that might change. There's, I know that there's been legislation at the state level to make it a majority vote, but I don't know if that's going anywhere. But anyway, since it is still two-thirds, and the Section 6 of the, Section 2-6-4 of the Charter does specifically state that we need an affirmative vote of five members to pass any bylaw, which logically means we are technically passing a repeal of the bylaw.
Right.
So, so it is simple majority.
Yeah.
But I think the whole point of the supermajority for the zoning bylaws is in part because they're so complicated.
Any further discussion? Council Katron?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I also am in favor of repealing this bylaw. I think when we get to the zoning part, I won't be available for the meeting next week, unfortunately, but when we get to the zoning part, I think we need to talk a little bit deeper about where we're going to zone this, particularly Main Street. So, I just wanted that point brought out and known. I'm ahead of time. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. When it does go through, the first step is public hearing, then it'll come up to the council for three readings. At those, during those three readings, we can have input into it to amend and change what we want. But if you have any concerns that you want to pass on to me, or Council Adams, or somebody else to bring forward for you before you depart for the week, we'll gladly bring those forward for you. So, anything? Council Steve?
Just one quick question, clarification of process here. Do we actually have to do three readings of a bylaw when we're repealing it?
I do not believe so, because you're just repealing it.
I'm not sure on that one.
You're not changing it, you're not amending it, you're just repealing it.
I'll...
Huh? What's that?
What? Because, I mean, it says, it just says that we, "Any bylaw which repeals or amends any part of the town bylaws shall set out in full the section or sections which we're just doing, by use of strikeout-type brackets and/or underscoring." In this case, it's all here. But it does state we have to do, where do I go? "Every bylaw shall be read aloud at least at three separate meetings before its passage," so I wasn't sure about that.
We're not passing a bylaw, though we're repealing it. It's a simple repeal, I believe. So, I mean, that would be my take on that?
I would hope so. I would hope so.
That we're not changing, you know, we're taking it from the record, I mean, that's...
I'm hoping that's the case. I'd rather not have to read it at times, but...
Well, when there's nothing to read, it's vote to repeal. So, I don't believe, my inclination is to repeal. It's a simple majority, it's gone.
You're probably right, but I'm not sure.
Okay. Anything further? Council Adams, did you have an amendment?
So, thank you, Ms. Chair. Recommend the amendment to strike out, amend, or take any action therefore on.
Okay.
Leave everything the same.
Second. I think, did you have more, though?
I did have one more at the very end, which could be changed as well, but the very end, placing a pending passage of zoning bylaw.
Second.
Or we can word that into adult-use zoning bylaw.
Can we, how about, said repeal to, or repeal to take effect upon adoption of zoning regulations?
Yeah.
Huh?
That makes sense. Yeah. Means the same thing.
It means the same thing, I just think it's a little more legal, pending adoption of zoning regulations, right? I think that'll just alleviate any fears. Is there a second to the amendment? Second. All right, discussion. Personally, I know some people had brought up, when we had started to talk about this, some concerns about it'll be the Wild West. I don't believe it would be, but I think this just clarifies it a little bit and tightens it up a little bit myself. Council Adams?
Just not to labor this in any, but I agree with Council Katrona and a few others. When we go to the zoning bylaw, the public hearing, I'll make some recommendations to the planning board itself, since we're all going to be there anyways. But I'm in agreement, and councillor, if you have any questions, or that you want to go, please send them to my way, or, and I can help out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion on the amendment? Okay, so the amendment, just so I'm, I won't read it entirely. It'll be vote to repeal, and then move to Section 7-509, and then at the end, pending adoption of the zoning regulations. Any discussion on that? All those in favor of the amendment? Opposed? Okay. Any further discussion on the motion as amended? Seeing none, roll call?
Council Adams?
Yes.
Council Katrona?
Yes.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
Council Jovan?
Yes.
Council Marquetti?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Council Steve?
Yes.
And just for the record, Council Manager, when she had texted me earlier today, did convey that she apologized for not being here today, but was in favor of the repeal because of the townwide vote, that she wanted, noted that she was in favor of it because of the will of the voters. Okay, thank you. All right, moving on. Next item, discuss the standard operating procedure number 14, Town of Southbridge Town Council, transfer and capital expenditure policies, and take any action to include voting to change, amend, or adopt the policy to conform with provisions of the Southbridge Home Rule Charter, S, Southbridge Home Rule Charter 2-4-1, comma 2. All right, so, I opened this up as discussion first, because we had a lot of conversations about this transfer policy, so I didn't have a specific motion, because I wanted us to have a good conversation about what are we doing, where are we going, and what the will of the voters are, or the intent of the voters when it came to charter. So, Mr. Town Manager, I know I did talk to Karen, Karen, if you want to come up, you can sit up here with us, because I think it'll be easier than you being at the podium. Come on up. Huh?
I thought you were referring to Dave for a second.
No, no. I do have some research and some additional items that were given to it. So, before I give this to Town Manager and the, so we all know that the Transfer of Appropriations Charter language currently, and I'll pass this out to my fellow councilors that may not have their charters with them tonight. So, Transfer of Appropriations is in Section 12. The current charter states, "At any time during the fiscal year, the town council may, upon recommendation of the town manager through the finance director, transfer pot or any unencumbered appropriation balance among programs within a department, office, or agency, may transfer pot or all of any unencumbered appropriation balance from one department, office, or agency to the, another." So that's the current language. That was a policy, item 14, which is in your packet tonight, that was the policy based on the town council's actions two years ago, that it was adopted, and we, I'm not going to rehash all the conversations that we had in general government and everything about this policy. So the question, and the reason it came up was because it's supposed to be based on town attorney opinion, that it's supposed to be reauthorized every year when you do the budget adoption vote. So we've had a lot of conversations in the past about what was the intent of the voter at the time of the adoption of the charter, and what changed. So I went back and got copies of the original charter, as to what did the framers of our charter state at that time and place, that they wanted to see, or what the duties were with transfer. How did they do the transfers before, and why did it change? So, and the Southbridge Home Rule Charter, and this is the oldest copy that I could find before the change. This is the charter right before the change that occurred in 2003, when it had a Charter Review Commission that was elected by the voters of the town. In that, you can see that, under transfers of appropriation then, it was Section 11, "At any time during the fiscal year, the town manager may transfer pot or all of unencumbered appropriations balance among programs within a department, office, or agency. Upon written request by the town manager, the town council may transfer pot or all of any unencumbered appropriation balances from one department, office, or agency to another." So, what it gave, the town, my understanding of this charter in 1998, before the change in 2003, was that for any transfers within the department, town manager, finance director could recommend it. And my conversations with the previous finance director, who was here during that period of time, was that if a department needed to have a transfer within their department, they simply filled out a transfer form, that went up to the finance director, the finance director would look at it, say, yes, there's money in that account, would then send it to the town manager, the town manager would then okay that transfer for the department, but if it went from one department to another, then that had to come to town council. So, I think that's where it gets, who has the authority to transfer monies, so we have the council at that point. So then we had conversations about my good friend, Mr. Smick, who talks about what's the intent of the voters, and I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Smick. I went back and got the, the, this is the Southbridge Home Rule Charter, passed by the electorate on June 6, 2003, and it was, and I just gave you the highlights on some of the things, "Final Report of the Southbridge Charter Commission, April 7, 2003." And it talks about, and I won't read it all, but it talks about two, what were the changes, and what, some of the other changes, and why they did it. And one of the, if you look down at town council, and it discusses how the powers were transferred from the manager to the council. And part of it was, "The commission vested all general corporate legislative policymaking appropriation powers of the town and the council, except where the charter provides otherwise." Right? And it was also the council to increase or decrease appropriations. So, it looks to me like, at that time, the framers of that Charter Review Commission wanted to change what, a lot of the authority, where the town manager had a lot of authority in that transfer, he had all the authority, change it to the council, so that there'd be more council oversight, which, okay, that's great. Now we're challenged with, how can we make it work so that it's practical, but that we maintain our fiscal oversight? Do we want to be in the business of transferring $50 here, or $50 there all the time, or do we want to develop some kind of sensible policy to piggyback what the council had adopted two years ago? And when we looked at that language that didn't get reauthorized, it was kind of vague as to percentages and dollar. What did that mean? So we had conversations about 30% or, right, 30% or $10,000, the greater up. Well, what was the intent of the council? And we talked about this in general government, and we had minutes of that. It was kind of unclear as to how this all went about. To me, 30, and I think I spoke very strongly about this, 30% is an awful high number, if you're talking, and I'll just throw that out, a police or fire department budget. A 30% of a police total expenditure line item of $2.4 million is $700,000. That's an awful lot, to have a simple power in the town manager's office or the finance office to be able to transfer that with no fiscal oversight, especially where the Charter Commission has said they want more oversight by the council. So, that's why it's been put on hold, but, so, okay, so now we're here tonight, ask the town clerk, not town clerk, I'm sorry, you're not the town clerk, you are the finance director, finance director, to, hey, what might work for you, given what was presented two years ago and passed by the council, what may work that we can approve that would still maintain some fiscal, well, which would, not some, would maintain fiscal oversight of the budget? Because if you looked at that, transfers at the end of the year last year, that, the report that came out, there was a lot of transfers. And when you look at it, you say, okay, this, in one department, I don't remember which one it was, transferred from salaries to another account, and then their salary account was below, so they had to transfer it back with no real, hey, look, how, why is this working like this? And gets to the point where we talked about staffing in different departments last year when we took that. I think it just, what will work, but maintain our ability to manage departments on a fiscal policy legislative body without micromanaging the departments as well. I think I addressed that pretty good. I hope I didn't leave anybody having questions before I turn it over to the manager or the finance director. So, there you go, Mr. Manager, I think I got it up.
So, thank you. No, I actually, I think, Mr. Chairman, you did a great job in doing your homework on this issue. I'm not going to get too much into this. I've had a discussion with our finance director to the tune of what you were just saying, what is a reasonable accommodation? I have no disagreement that, you know, transfer, be it 30% of a large account, particularly we're talking fire and police salary, which is where the big money is. I would agree with you that that is a significant amount of money under the charter, and I'm comfortable, quite frankly, with lowering that amount. This administration's position is we want to be open and have a clear understanding between the administration and the council as to what's reasonable transfers. We're not attempting to hide anything. So, with that, the finance director has spent some time looking at this issue to try to find a reasonable compromise, one that council will feel comfortable with, and I think we feel comfortable that council members aren't going to have to go in here and do $10 transfers, which I think we all find is just ludicrous, and a waste of everybody's time. So with that, I'll turn it over to finance director. I think we, I'm not sure, I know the chairman was provided the recommendation. Did you have copies for everybody else?
I have copies.
You do have copies?
I have copies.
So I'll let the finance director go through the changes with you, and the chair can provide those copies for you.
Do you want me to pass out the second one, part of this, to the capital part? Do you want to talk about that at the same time?
It doesn't change, yeah.
No. There's a recommendation on capital.
I'll just give everybody a minute to read it through.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, if everyone's had a chance to look through it.
That's it?
Okay. The way that the standard operating procedure, the policy is put together now, it's actually part of the language of the vote to adopt the budgets, to give the town manager authority to reallocate the greater 5,000 or 30%. I don't know if the council would want to stay with that, or just put into place an actual policy that would only have to be amended if the council chose to do an amendment. So I looked through the transfer logs, and I would agree that the, that the 30% does allow a lot of leeway on the transfers. So what I, coming up as a recommendation, that the town manager may, pursuant to his managerial discretion, reallocate up to 25% of a voted departmental budget line item, not to exceed $50,000 in the aggregate per fiscal year, within any department, without prior approval of the town council. And this policy will apply to the general fund operating budget and the enterprise fund operating budgets. So basically, what we're going to accomplish here, so we can reallocate up to 25%, but it cannot delete out a budget line item. So if there's a budget line item of $1,000, the most that can be transferred out of there would be 25%. But if it's a larger line item... But if it's a larger line item, then it could go up to 50,000, but that's the total amount that it can go up to for that fiscal year. So that would still give us some leeway to transfer some things that need to be transferred, but it would still give the council, I believe, and, and, you know, whatever, whatever you think, and if there wants to be some discussion, um, you know, some oversight. So I would assume, say, say there's some, um, positions that are vacant in fire, fire or police. Chances are it's going to go over the 50,000 during that year. So the police and fire will have to come back to the council once it gets beyond that 50,000 and say, this, this is why I need to do this, and this is what I need to, this is why I'm asking to do it for. Now, the other language that I included just after that is the same language that's currently in the policy, that there will be a log of the reallocations, and it would be provided monthly to the town council, and that anything greater than the 25% of a line, not to exceed 50, will go to the appropriate subcommittee. And if it is time sensitive, the, the town council chair could approve it to be added to the next town council agenda. And the only other thing that isn't on your, um, isn't on this report here is that originally the standard operating procedure said that it was supposed to be the town council transfer and capital expenditure policies. What ended up happening is the town council transfer policy was approved at a separate meeting from the capital expenditure policy. So what we decided to do, and, and, um, the, the chair has some pages to pass out, we're going to make the capital expenditure policy, it was already voted by the town council on June 4th of 2018, a separate standard operating procedure number 15, so that the two don't get mixed together, so that they're totally separate. And then just the town council transfer policy, that will be the new title for the SOP number 14. So here's the, um, the one that was approved for capital expenditures in June of 2018. So that will conclude my recommendations on this, so there can be discussion, and we're here for any questions or anything further on the policy.
So before I open it up, um, just one item that I just noticed, and I, I didn't check it earlier, um, the, the item that was put in as standard operating procedure number 14 was not the actual adopted one.
Right.
So that was put in your packet, the actual one should have been 52319, which had this language in it, which is what we had passed out at the last meeting. If you want, give me two seconds, uh, take a quick recess for two seconds so I can make copies of this and get it passed out.
It shouldn't be 52319.
Good. Call a meeting back to work. Okay, so what I've passed out is the actual standard operating procedure from number 14 from, uh, the policy handbook, um, which outlines that. So, um, the, so I'll open up the discussion on changing, um, I think the only thing that would be changed would, on this policy would be pursuant to his managerial discretion, then reallocate up to 25% of the voted departmental budget line item, not exceed $50,000 in the aggregate per fiscal year.
Just, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Town Manager.
Just one big comment, just the name of the standing operating procedure, we would take out and capital expenditure.
Yeah, no, I understand. I'm talking about the actual percentages in dollar amounts.
Counselor Katrona?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, maybe Karen can help answer a couple of my questions. The frequency of transfers, I guess, within the departments, how frequent, how many? In your opinion, could they be done every two weeks and wait for the next council meeting? For approval?
Mr. Chair, if I could, um, at this time of year, there aren't that many because we're at the beginning of the fiscal year. It's more towards the latter part of the fiscal year where there's a lot of transfers, um, you know, when, when people see where their budget is at, when they've been managing it for most of the year. So, um, that becomes the critical part is, is later on, um, probably around the April-May timeline.
Okay.
So we'd have to make sure that we, if, you know, if all the transfers are approved by town council, that the departmental managers do a good job at going through and determining what they need to give themselves and the council enough time to, um, to discuss and approve the transfers.
Thank you.
Counselor Steve?
If, if I just could follow up, Mr. Chairman, I, I think the transfers are painless. I guess I need to hear more discussion on this. I, I think it takes away the fiscal oversight if we look at adopting something like this right now. So I will listen to further conversation and comment more. Thank you.
Counselor Steve?
Um, yeah, I had a quick question to follow up on that. Do you have a, I mean, obviously with the ones that we see, the biggest ticket items are, tend to be the police-fire departments, DPW. But from, from your experience though, which departments do you see the most transfers in? And what can we do as far as budgeting goes to make it so that they are, that when they come to us for the budget cycle, when we start, when we're designing their budgets, that we have a better control over, um, what their budget actually looks like so that we don't have those transfers?
If I could, through the chair, um, I think what, what we're seeing is what I had mentioned before, a lot of times if there's, um, changes in personnel, where there's vacancies, and the department may need to cover overtime, or some other type of, um, you know, the personnel expenses like that, that's where you're going to see your most transfers.
Right.
Or if there's something that they want to accomplish by the end of the year because of those vacancies. But otherwise, you're going to, you're going to see smaller things, you know, like, like you saw, we couldn't cover the dues for the, um, what was it, for the MMA or something or short, by just, by just a few dollars there. So those are just some, some of the smaller things.
Right.
But then when that kind of gets caught up, I guess, you know, the, the departments are saying, okay, well, I, all I need is the $5 in order to pay that, you know, now I'm going to have to go to subcommittee and to council. It just takes some time. It, it, it doesn't really hurt anything, you know, to take the time to do that.
All right. Further discussion? Counselor Marketti?
Um, I don't, I think the town manager should come to the town council for every single dime that he wants to do, to redirect. I don't think that's ludicrous. What this would do is, is just erode the power of the town council and give it to the town manager. I think that if, I, I wouldn't, you know that the House of Representatives wouldn't give President Trump that kind of power, that he could do whatever he wants with the budget? It just would never happen. In fact, I think President Trump, he wanted to redirect some of the Department of Defense money to build his wall, and had to go to the Supreme Court to get a ruling on that, and I'm not even sure it's finalized. So I, I don't see the reason why, for the town manager to have that power, and I, I would be voting no on this. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just, just for a point of clarification, um, the town manager would not have the authority to transfer money, say, from the police department to any other department to build a wall or anything like that.
Well, the point I'm making.
Let me finish, let me, Mr. Counselor Marketti. All it would allow is if, within that police department budget, within line items, so if there was crews of maintenance that he, uh, what had to be done, or, or whatever, that a certain amount of that line item within that department. So he couldn't change it from one department to another. It would be line items with, I certainly respect your, your comments, um, but there's no ability to transfer monies to other departments or other wish list things that would be within the purview of the manager of that department, police chief, fire chief, DPW director, uh, clerk, finance director, within their department, the ability to move small amounts, um, to other accounts. And I think one of my concerns was, I think on the other policy, it just seemed like if, if, if they wanted to, they could zero out a whole account and transfer that money. This would only allow on that small item, a hundred dollar line item, say for postage, they can only take $25 and use it to another, another, um, item within their, their budget.
Counselor Steve?
Um, thank you. Um, I was thinking, you know, obviously, we've been discussing this quite a bit at, at this level and at, um, subcommittee and, over the last couple of years. And, you know, I think during the first, the first round, when we started talking about this stuff, back when, um, when Counselor Clements was still chairman, if I remember correctly, um, and we, uh, we came up with the policy that, that we had drafted as number 14. Um, I was, I'll admit, I wasn't aware of some of the older versions of the charter and some of the changes that had come up then, and it seemed to make sense at the time. But having heard some of the discussion we've had since then, some of which Mr. Smick has brought up, some of which Counselor Lazo has brought up, um, some of the experience that we've seen over, of the years from before, long before I was involved. And I think that it actually makes a lot of sense, what, the arguments that they have raised over why the charter was changed, to put the, to put those issues into the council's hands. Karen just mentioned a few minutes ago, um, I'm not sure if you intended to mean it this way, but when you said that, that it doesn't really hurt anybody to bring the small transfers forward, it is, it's mildly inconvenient, but unfortunately, the, the process of government sometimes is. So I would, I would think that we actually probably should leave it the way the charter says it.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'll go, Counselor Marketti, and then?
I just wanted to respond to you that, you know, so it's a small amount, let, make him come to us for every single dime. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I just want to clarify that they wouldn't be able to transfer within, to other departments, that's all, just for a point of clarification. I'll let Karen explain, and then, then finance director.
If I, if I could, I just wanted to explain, and you, you probably heard that because you did, you did vote on this, but in, um, an issue that came up on our insurance coverage, we have, if we pay by the end of July, then we can get a discount.
Right.
And it's pretty substantial, it's about 3% of the total. See, what happened there is that in total, we had enough to cover all our insurance policy expenses, but there wasn't enough in, see, like, the town property, and there was excess in the school property line item. So we would have to come back with that to transfer. What happened is we didn't have enough time to do that, and that's why the transfer came after the fact. Those are the few exceptions, you know, that I would be worried about. I wouldn't want to cost the town extra money because we couldn't bring the transfer to council in the, in the right amount of time. And the other thing I wanted to mention too, the transfers are initiated by the department heads. You know, I, I know that you had said, you know, you don't want to give the town manager the, um, you know, the authority to do that, but it's really, you know, comes down to also, you know, the departments are coming forward, so the town manager isn't saying, I think you should do this, or, you know, micromanaging in the department. It's the department heads coming forward. So I just wanted to clarify that.
I don't want to give the department that much power either.
And that's fine.
I'll recognize Mr. Smick, and then Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dave Smick, 145 Ridge Road. Just to give a little clarity to the 2003, uh, election charter commission, around that time, council just fired a town manager. And during their battles, one of the discussions that used to come up all the time was, and the question was, are we a strong town council form of government or a strong town manager form of government? So shortly after the elected charter commission was elected, you can see through some of their changes in their notes, that it was their intent to make this form of government a strong town council form of government, not a strong town manager form, which, uh, I was a member of council prior to that, and it was my opinion prior to that, we were a strong town manager form of government. So, uh, that was the rationale behind a lot of the changes. Some of them I agree with, some of them I don't. Some of them are items that could probably be rectified when council decides to, uh, appoint a charter review committee. Uh, but, you know, that, that's for the future to sit down and look at and talk about. Uh, now, it's great that you're all talking here tonight about, you know, proposed policies, procedures, and I'm, I'm not really concerned with any of that, uh, because to me, the larger argument comes prior to that. And what the charter says is that only council transfers money. Didn't say council and others, the town manager or department heads. The charter is clear and in more than one area, you are the appropriating body and nobody else. Now, even under your procedure that I fought two years ago and lost, um, you put in a ca, uh, caveat that said, well, you know, every 30 days, uh, you have to inform council of, uh, these transfers that were made. And it's my understanding that council was not informed of any of those minor transfers, which I heard after, uh, it was a lot of money, that council was ever informed. Now, when we went to this form of government, and if you think about the process, that process was only done at town meeting by town meeting vote, appropriations and transfers. The people in selecting this form of government gave you people that authority. They gave up their own and set it in your laps, not department heads, you guys. So anything that you do, well, I don't even think council has the authority to even alter the charter. You know, you're way over your head on that one. That is the people's document, uh, you even look at every year at election time. I know I'm starting to stray a little, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, no, I, I.
But after the election and the night of reorganization, every elected councillor puts their left hand on the Bible and raises their hand, and they take an oath. Now, you don't hear much discussion about, uh, the oath of office. Years ago, I went a little bit deeper, and I'm saying, what the heck's the importance of it? Does it even mean anything? And if you look at it, you do your homework, you know, the basic premise is conscientiously, you are bound to abstain from any act that is inconsistent with it. Now, in the oath is constitution, state constitution, state law, town charter, and local bylaws. Now, and I'll repeat it again, you are conscientiously bound to abstain from any act that is inconsistent with it. That gives the charter a little more meaning. Now, two meetings ago, uh, the finance director correctly stated, uh, what happened with the insurance issue, and transfer was already done, and my question is not the, what, any action of the finance director, uh, who I highly respect in her position. But it's what council says and doesn't say is what concerns me. I've been saying for the last three years that it's council's responsibility to create a culture in Southbridge that you guys are going to abide by the charter and be, and consistently abide by the charter. Now, two meetings ago, on the insurance side, transfer already happened, but council unanimously approved, uh, the transfer. The chairman, with all due respect to the chairman, he said with that kind of savings, The Chairman, with all due respect to the Chairman, he said, with that kind of savings, uh, I'll gladly vote yes for. Now, I understand the desire to save money, but what we did is, we just put a price on Charter obedience, and that renders this almost useless. Mr. Manager, you could take that statement or action to Council, and this year, you could say, well, if I can come up with the savings, I can violate the Charter at the same time, and Council's going to approve it. That's not what it's about. Council does not have the authority to amend, circumvent, sidestep through, now, one, I think, Mr. Chairman, at the last General Government Subcommittee meeting, where the discussion was on transfers, uh, you had a letter from an attorney, that at the beginning of the letter, he said, what you're trying to do is against Charter. But later on, in his, what he told you, I didn't see the whole letter-
Let's just be clear, Mr. Smick, can I just, as a point of record, there was not a decision on this policy about this sitting Council or last year's sitting Council. We were left a mess to clean up because something wasn't done properly at the vote. Council had already had a policy, this Council, just for the record, is not trying to violate Charter. I respect the Charter, I respect your comments about the transfer, okay? That transfer is all you're made. Now, we can go down the road of, okay, um, I, I think, honestly, it was transparency to come forward and say, hey, we made the transfer, right, wrong, or indifferent, it was transparent. Could very simply, on many of these items right here, and I don't mean to interrupt you, but you're talking about how we violate Charter, and, and- At the beginning of the, of this fiscal year, because the motion was not correct, that was put on the vote in document, we could have simply said, you know what, nothing was done, let's forget about it, instead, we've talked about it for hours and hours and hours and hours. I've heard your comments many times about Charter, I respect those comments, you've, over your five minutes, if you want to wrap it up, where we respect the Charter, tell us what you want us to do. As far as I'm concerned right now, the Finance Director said it's no big skin to come back with Char- with, with transfers. If that's the case, then I'll put a stop to this conversation, because I'm not going to waste my time anymore on this topic. We wasted three hours on one meeting, two hours on another meeting, I'm not going to waste another two hours talking about whether the Charter or not. The Council, two years ago, voted for a policy based on a legal opinion, that didn't come to this Chairman, didn't come to the Council last year. It was a policy, two years ago, that, for the life of me, and I've already talked about it, reading the minutes, I can't figure out how that motion even got through, uh, because I still can't figure it out. As far as I'm concerned, and you, you are rightfully correct, Charter Review, in April of 2020, five months from now, six months from now, we will be setting a Charter Review Committee. So we've already talked about, in General Government last week, that, you know what, Bylaw Review Committee, we couldn't get anybody to sit on a Bylaw Review Committee after months of asking. We talked about rules and regulations at our last General Government meeting, so does it make sense for us to waste time right now, talking about, uh, going down this road about what the Charter means and all that, what the Bylaw Reviews is going to be, or what the policies and procedures? No, let's do it right. We'll set up a Charter Review Committee in April, hammer out throughout the year, then move into Bylaw Review and Policy Review at that time. But this Council is not trying to violate Charter, we're really not. Okay, if tacit approval, I'll take responsibility for that. Okay, let's bring in the, the parties that be, let's reprimand them for transferring to save the town money, right, wrong, or indifferent, but I'm going to move on on this topic, finish up what you want to talk about Charter, please. And I don't mean to be rude, I'm usually pretty patient-
Mr. Chairman, with all due respect-
Let me just finish. You, and I respect your opinions and your comments, you go through the same thing over and over again, so if you could just wrap up about the Charter this time-
And you guys keep making the same mistake over and over again. You keep cutting the discussion short, but you haven't resolved the issue, so it keeps coming up again. This is, how many times now have you guys now, at General Government, you didn't resolve it, but you ended the discussion? Here we are again tonight, talking about it, you want to end the discussion, but it doesn't look like it's been fixed yet.
Well, it can't be fixed, because you're just telling me, with all due respect, you're telling me the Charter doesn't allow us to make transfers, that's what you just said up there.
No, I do-
The Charter does not give us the approval of-
The Charter does not allow anybody other than Council to make the transfer.
Right, so we'll make the transfers and not develop a policy, so that's why I'm ending discussion.
Right.
We'll be done with it, go to Charter Review-
You shouldn't even be discussing it tonight.
Mr. Chairman-
Because at, right now, at present, there is no policy or procedure-
Mr. Chairman.
Regarding transfers, because it wasn't adopted and approved at budget night. There is no, so what exists only is the Charter, and I don't think there needs to be any policy or procedure to take that on any further, because I think it's clear enough, that only you can do it. You even showed it, that same night of that meeting, that you did the five dollar transfer in less than sixty seconds.
Okay, I'm, are you almost done, because your time is up?
I'm done.
Your five minutes are up.
I'm done, thank you.
And I respect that opinion, however, you're saying that there's no policy or procedure. The Council adopted a policy and procedure two years ago, so there was a policy. Right, wrong, or indifferent, whatever policy they adopted may have been flawed, there was a policy that was not followed, that was adopted. It may conflict with the Charter as what you're saying, but there was a policy that was not followed correctly, that was adopted. So this Council is trying to say, do we go back to that policy and change and amend because some of those parameters were wrong, or do we take any action therefore? The recommendation, you're tell, and I respect your opinion, is Charter doesn't allow you to do that, I've heard it clearly. Counsel Marquetti.
I'm sort of new at this, but would it be appropriate just to table this?
No, uh, well, you could make an entertaining motion to table, the only reason I would not want to table it, is because you just prolonged the conversation, like Mr. Smick just said, we've talked about it over and over and over again.
But tabling something, unless-
Well, yeah, you could table it, but I, I just want to make a final decision, but I'll, yeah, you entertain a motion to table?
No, I'm just, I'm just asking for a clarification.
I just want to make sure that you're not-
Wouldn't tabling it end, end-
It would end discussion, wouldn't end the issue, but it would end discussion for done.
Well, who would have to bring it back, if we tabled it? It would basically be done.
It would, but, does that resolve anything, Mr. Marquetti?
Well, no, the only person who could bring it back is somebody who voted to table it, correct? I'm new at this, so I'm just asking-
Yeah, I know, you could bring it back, but let's, let's make a decision.
But the only ones who could bring it back are the ones who tabled it, right? Someone who voted no could not bring it back, is that correct?
Uh, no, I could, I, I'm not sure, I'd have to review that, but I, I, that, I apologize, I'm not clearing that. Counsel Adams had his hand up, and now I'll go to Counsel-
Actually, I think Counsel Steve's had it up for a while, so, Mr. Chair.
Counsel Steve.
First off, I just want to clarify, but as far as I, as I understand what tabling does, is it, it basically just lets it sit there, it would not solve anything, um, I think Counselor, um, Counsel Jovan is correct in the sense that we do have the procedure number fourteen that is on the books, and that we did not follow it this current budget cycle. And that's so that, to, to make a conclusion, that, so that, the existing transfer policy, um, I, I think what Mr. Smick is saying, and I, and I, and I'm kind of agree based on what I was saying earlier, um, that it is probably in violation of the Charter. So I would like to make a motion that we repeal, uh, standard operating procedure number fourteen.
Second.
Second.
Discussion on it?
That is a proper motion, because we did, it was entertaining to take any action therefore, so.
Discussion, Counsel Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, so I, I, I probably came in here this evening, ready to listen to different ideas of transfers here and there, take a look at the old Charter, take a look at the new Charter, obviously, there is, um, um, an area that was removed for a reason. I, I went back and forth on this, I wrote down questions, I heard the inconvenience, I heard the, not a big deal, I heard a lot of things, and obviously, saving money is, is key for us within this town council, and I think this town. I don't think this was a waste of time this evening, Mr. Chair, I don't think it's, not that directed towards you, but anybody here, I think it was a great discussion to have, because we had to come, we have to come full circle here, and I don't think tabling it and prolonging the situation is going to help us here either. I've changed my mind, uh, my earlier stance on this, I'm looking at the current Charter, if we have a Charter Review down the road, I think this is perfect, that'll be a perfect time to make changes where we, we see fit. Um, I did have a question, and this goes towards either the town manager or the Financial Director, um, you, you brought up about the insurance saving the town a little bit of money, uh, which, which was significant, how often in the last few years has that actually happened, um, to us, where we had to, like, we, we obviously, we didn't have enough time to set up a meeting to approve that transfer, or to pay that bill, or whatever it may be?
If I could, that, that'll only happen once a year.
Okay, all right, and, uh, so do we know that it may be coming towards at the end of the year as well, or we just don't know unless it-
No, it'll, it'll be at the beginning of the year, when we pay the full amount of the premium on the insurance.
So at this point in time, thank you, I, um, uh, again, I think this was a great education for me a little bit, and, um, I, I'm in favor of going right by what the Charter is saying, I mean, we can argue that point, um, is there any great words in there, but I'm going to stick to, at this point, we got elected to actually show up here and be here, and vote on things at the last possible minute, and, um, take that very seriously, and so I'm in favor of staying exactly with the Charter and moving that policy. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Counsel Nash.
Thank you, excuse me, thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, um, appreciate the sentiments that were shared here tonight, um, I am sort of in the same boat as Counselor Adams, but, um, for a lot of different reasons, and I just want to step back for a moment, um, appreciate the comments by Mr. Smick, um, and not to go too far down this path, I'm not worried about a strong town manager form of government, or a strong town council form of government, I'm concerned about effective government, and I think that this is something, when we step back once again and revisit the issue, I was part of the Council that enacted this, initially, it was perhaps knee jerk, but we spent a lot of time trying to find a solution that was always our intention, and I'll stand behind that to my grave. I can look at it now, and it's, it's fairly clear to me that, um, I'd like to see that the department heads are empowered in other ways. I would like to see that one of my premises, and I hope that I had stated it two years ago, or a year and a half ago, when this was being discussed, was that we are as responsible as possible as a community, as a government, and as leaders, when it comes to department heads, to budget as, as tightly as we can, and as correctly as we can. That was what drove this. Regardless of everything else, I'm not at all worried about forty or fifty transfers coming to town council for five dollars, for fifty dollars, fifty thousand dollars, whatever the case may be, so I too am changing my stance, and I am, I'm, I'm happy to say that it was a responsible motion by Counselor Steve tonight, and I think it's time to put this to rest and get back to the business that we need to be conducting so that we can take this community forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Nash. Thank you for those comments, and, and again, I apologize for getting heated, and it's just, we try very hard to follow rules, regulations, policies, um, and that, that's my goal as Chairman, to follow those. Some things are not perfect, and, and I think the frustration level gets to the point where you talked about this ad nauseam, for so long. And it's great, because we've had healthy debate, respectful debate, both in General Government and here tonight at the table, and that's the good thing, um, that we have, and we have the ability to talk about things and walk away and come with, uh, solutions to town. To me, I think, um, as Chair, I've always tried to strive to, to put things forward in a timely manner, and when anybody has, you know, with good planning, you should have minimal effect on the, uh, the effective parts of government, that if you have a plan in place, whatever it is, uh, bids that go out, and you want it to come through the various subcommittees that, that you plan accordingly, if we have to set special meetings for emergency, we have the ability to do that, and Councilors have done that, um, and that's, and that's the great thing. And this is probably a topic that, once that Charter Review goes through, let, let them hash that out and see, um, and I think I, we've commented, Counsel Nash's commented, and other Counselors, when you look at Charter and bylaws, how some of those things conflict, um, and that's going to be the charge of anybody that comes forward on that, to make sure that sensible policies such as this, if there is a policy, that it's sensible and within the frameworks of good government. Counsel Steve.
I just had a quick question through you to Ms. Harnoyz, um, earlier, you mentioned that this is a, this annual, this is an annual transfer that, that comes up in early July, if I understood, um, is there any way, I think it would make some logical sense that, that we simply put it into the budget for the previous fiscal year, so that we pay it in June, and then that would get it out of the way entirely, so we wouldn't need that transfer to do it in July? Wouldn't that make sense? Could we, would that be, would we be able to do that, from, from a legal point of view?
Through the Chair, no, we wouldn't be able to do that, because it would, so, it's an expense of that specific fiscal year, which doesn't start till July first.
You can't prepay the insurance-
You know, next, next year, it may not be an issue, we try to budget the best that we can.
Well, I'm sure you do, absolutely.
You know, we, we, we look at the history, we look at what we, you know, we call the insurance companies, see what they're recommending as an, as an increase.
Okay.
And it, it may not come up again next year, but it'll be something that should be on our radar, that as soon as, you know, the fiscal year starts, and we can get the information, if we need a transfer, then we'll come forward as soon as possible.
Right, because I know that we have seen the documents about increasing and sometimes decreasing, but not often, insurance rates and stuff like that, so. So, I mean, I know we kind of get that information, we just don't see the final, actual dollar value before the fiscal year transfer swi- switches over, so. And I'm not, I'm not saying that you don't try to, because you definitely do. I have very much, a lot of respect for your, for your fiscal abilities, and it shows.
A lot of it is the timing, too, when, when you're putting the budgets together in January or February, trying to project out to what it's going to be, you know, in, in July, and using the information, but we'll just, we'll continue to go forward and do the best we can.
As, as you do, thank you.
Mr. Town Manager, I'll go to Counsel Adams and Counsel-
It'd be a brief comment, just, you remember last year, uh, one of my priorities in last year's budget was to fix some line items that were historically underfunded, because those are the line items that drew a lot of the transfers, because we had to move money into accounts, and I thought it was foolish, I really believe what Counselor Nash was talking about, that when we, when we develop budgets, they should develop in such a way that they're accurate in what we actually expect, and truthfully, for years, that was not the case here. So I think there was about, I want to say there was eight or nine line items that we dealt with last year, to make them more reasonable, so that will reduce some of the adjustments or transfers this year in its own right, right? So the, we recognize that, um, that the practice was poor in the past, and I think what we did last year will go a long way to help with this problem. And also, I, to, to the Chairman's point, um, the, the big transfers generally occur on police and fire, is police officers and firemen leave, and we've, you know, to, to a lot of credit, this, this, this Council and our administration are working together to fill those spots, um, we shouldn't, hopefully, we shouldn't have those, the needs of people coming and going as quickly as we had in the past, and that will, that'll also help to ease some of the transfers between overtime and the regular payroll budget.
Counsel Adams?
Mr. Chair, thank you, I'll just move the question.
Second. Questions moved, all those in favor of moving the question, pose, you know, if it's all present, so motion before us is vote to remove standard operating procedure number fourteen, in its entirety. Right? What's that?
To repeal, yeah.
To repeal, repeal, remove, right, same thing. Any further discussion on that? No, I'll, I'll remove the question. Roll call.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Katrona?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti?
Yes.
Counsel Nash?
Yes.
Counsel Steve?
Yes. Just as a follow-up, uh, to, uh, Finance Director, so with this town of Southbridge capital expenditure policy, is that already a policy within the policy manual?
It is not, it, it was adopted by the town council, but it was not in the policy manual, so this will put it in the manual.
Okay, I'll put that forward on, um, the October seventh minute, meeting, for adoption, because it's not in the agenda tonight.
Well, I don't, I don't think that-
It was actually adopted by the town council on June-
So you just want to identify it as standard-
Yes, yes.
Yeah, okay, that's right.
Yes.
So it would become whatever the next policy number would be. We remove the policy, so there is no transfer policy. Yep. All right, Counsel's forum, Counsel Marquetti?
Uh, thank you, I'm going back to-
Going back to some of my comments that I've been making at the previous meetings, the empty lot on Maria Avenue, I know that you told me there was a seven-day notice for them to stop the erosion up there, but I haven't heard anything since then. And it's been longer than seven days, and there's nothing been changed up there. There's a large excavator machinery sitting on that lot, too. It's been there all year. It's inches from the sidewalk, you could brush by it as you walk by, so. I would like that, for you to follow up on that, if you could, please, thank you. The clothing bin on Elm Street at the corner of Elm and Everett, I know that it gets cleaned up, but now it's starting to build up again. There's plastic shelves there, chairs, pillows, all kinds of stuff. That's a clothing and shoe bin, not a place for people to dump their garbage. And I certainly couldn't do that on my front yard, and if I did, the recycling police would be at my door looking in my bin, so I would like that cleaned up. It's my suggestion that it be removed. Go ahead, I'll let you speak.
I went by there about three hours ago, it was clean, so.
I came on my way here, it was on my way here, it was not clean. It's starting to build up again.
You're talking about Elm and Everett, the one where there used to be a store on that corner?
Right, yeah.
Okay, they must have just put it out, Mike, because it was clean three hours ago. I just went by it with the building inspector and the assessor, and it was perfectly clean.
Is there something wrong with the inspection services? Because I have emailed them about certain issues. Some constituents ask me things, they don't want me to bring it up here, but they want me to look into it, and I have looked into it, but I never get any response from the department.
Whenever you're forward to me, I give you an answer back, and I get the answer from them. So I appreciate any question you have like this, all you get to do is email me, and you get responses like really quick from me, so.
I appreciate it.
I check with my department heads, I find out what your issues are, and I respond, and try to get back to you. I just happen to be inspecting distressed properties today, so I went by that bin, and I remember your comments, and I was like, okay, it's nice and clean now, so I don't know what happened the last couple hours, but, you know, it was looking really good as of about 2:00 today, 2:30 today.
Well, on my way here tonight, it was not, okay. And I just wanted to say one more thing about that International Club. Like I said, I did get some calls. I went by there Sunday night, and it was pretty loud, that's totally unacceptable, so something needs to be done there. I'm not trying to stop the guy from making money, but he should do it out of town or something.
During the comments that were made tonight, I was reviewing the bylaws about the noise, right? So there's a strict bylaw from, I want to say 7:00 in the morning, to, or 10:00 PM at night, to 7:00 in the morning, where you can't make noises and stuff. But within the bylaw, as I just read it tonight, and I'm going to talk to the police chief, the police chief can, if they believe that the noise is obnoxious and causing neighbors and stuff, they can do, I think it's a 21E violation for that. So, you know, I was sort of interested as I was reading it, because the police is saying they can't do anything. My interpretation of the bylaw is they can give fines if the noise is beyond normal. And there's just specific laid-out descriptions in that bylaw, so I'm going to have a conversation with the police chief about that, and I think we can deal with that a little more effectively. I don't think the general, you know, 10, I'm sorry, 10:00 at night to 7:00 in the morning, it applies here. What applies is the obnoxious noise during the daytime period, so we'll have that conversation.
It's a residential community, so I appreciate you looking into it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council. I believe it does have to be looked in, but I'd be careful on saying that 21E would apply, because the town granted him a permit for entertainment, so I think more clarification on the entertainment end of that would have to take place, because I think that 21D is for somebody that's playing music on a neighborhood type thing, but we've issued a permit, I think you'd have to look at a little bit more into that specific provision of bylaws. Council Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, just a caveat off of Council Marquetti, there's a board health policy on those closed bins. So they can actually, after warning, after fines, can be removed from this town. So I think when we, when I was on the board of health and we adopted that policy, it was enforced, it got cleaned up, and I'm sure they're working hard on it, but I have noticed slowly but surely, there's been stuff hanging out by the closed bins on Main and Everett, I've seen as well. So there's a policy in place, and the whole purpose behind that was for those that own those boxes, they got to take care of those boxes, so, you know, if they've had multiple tickets, then they need to be removed from this town. I want to thank Karen and the town manager for this evening with the transfer policy. I know it took some time and effort to come up with your ideas, and I know this has been maybe a sore subject here and there, but I just want to thank you guys for doing it. I want to thank you for being very patient with us, per se. And leaving on this note, it was a healthy conversation, passionate, caring, and I just want to thank the chair and all the other councillors, citizens as well, for bringing this up and educating us, or me specifically. And we get that way sometimes, and it's good, healthy debate. I've seen some other places where it's full-blown madness, so I appreciate professionalism in here. Thank you, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Council Catrona?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. In reference to the three residents that came forward this evening in reference to the club and the noise, I'd like to see, the town manager mentioned that there's going to be a meeting with the police chief, and I'd like to see some follow-up or hear the follow-up from that meeting. The residents came out tonight to voice their concerns, and I think it's important that we give them that follow-up. Thank you.
Mr. Town Manager?
So, if you recall my conversation with the gentleman at the time, there already has been discussion with the police chief on it. The police chief is very much in the position of the citizens who spoke tonight, and he's going to have a different recommendation for any one-day permit moving forward. So the conversation's been had, the chief is on, in league with the comments of the people, and we'll see what the liquor board does when he gives his comments.
Thank you. Council Steve?
One quick thing to follow up on the noise bylaws, I think. I'm looking at the noise bylaws right now, and just to clarify, it does specifically state regarding radios and other such devices, the use or use, operation or prohibiting, or permitting to be played, used, blah, blah, blah. Any sound production or reproduction device, blah, 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 in such a manner as to disturb the peace, quiet, and comfort of any reasonable person of normal sensitivity and any residents as to be, okay, and that is to be, that is defined as unlawful and violation of the bylaw. The sentence referring to chapter, for hours of 10:00 PM to 7:00 PM is actually separate.
That's what I said, right.
So they're really legally two separate things. I mean, yes, it's strongly, more strongly enforced from 10:00 to 7:00 in the evenings, and it specifically cites there as being 50 feet or more from the building. However, it can be enforced at any time, and it should be. Because that's, people are coming forward to complain about it, and it's obviously an issue. Other than that, I really don't have anything to say.
Hey, Council. I'm sure you'll have more Monday night.
Probably.
Council Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things tonight. It's actually kind of nice for me, from where I sit, where I didn't speak up much about the repeal of the prohibitive bylaw in regards to cannabis, as we worded marijuana. However, I am one that concurs with a resident who, on more than one occasion, got up and spoke about cannabis being the substance, but neither here nor there. It's always interesting how government can work, and I do think we were effective tonight. It's very interesting to me that we had so many long conversations before many of us were sitting up here on council, to develop a bylaw, to go through all the steps and all the processes, and finally, something gets done to reflect the will of the people, after all, and repeal it. Same token, when it comes to this policy and procedure on transfers, what a long, strange trip it's been. I've got to tell you, a year and a half ago, I sat up here as a councillor in subcommittee following morning, this town hall was in disarray, and I don't know if people realize that. It wasn't full disarray, because we had a competent town manager and department heads, including the finance director, but there were some very serious concerns, and council had to work jointly with the appointed leaders to put something in place. I respect that, but I also respect that we made some changes tonight that I think are perfectly acceptable, because we do have good people in good places. So enough of that. I want to thank Councilor Daniel for his efforts to tour the water and wastewater treatment facilities. I'm sorry that, because of my travel schedule, as you're all tired of hearing, wasn't able to join him, but those are very important pieces of our town-owned property and our resources and assets, and it's nice to hear that there have been some more good things going on due to the effect of town council appropriation and good people that run and operate those plants. One last thing tonight, I want to remind folks that if they haven't seen the press release, there is a panel discussion being sponsored and hosted by the Town Manager Substance Abuse Advisory Committee. That's chaired by Deputy Police Chief Jose Dinghy, and it is a fantastic group of people with a mission that is absolutely respectable and near and dear to my heart. I am not at all ashamed to say that I hope I can be there. I hope to learn something more, as I always have when I've been able to participate, but it is something that I hope the community will pay attention to. We have some very good people that are going to be in attendance and participating right here in council chambers. I think it's next Thursday night, if I'm not mistaken, on the 26th. Maria and I will likely be here as long as I'm home, but the town manager and Deputy Chief Dinghy in particular, as well as the fire chief, the now-fire chief, they worked really hard with this group of people to put some resources in place to help educate the public. So I hope that people show up, and if not, I hope they pay attention and are able to watch a live stream or video. There, I did get my say in tonight, so I appreciate the efforts of this council. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Council Nash. And I did watch those meetings a year and a half ago, and I think they were just as passionate as I was tonight on the other end, so. It's one good thing that we walk away, though.
Yes, sir.
Laughing, that's a good thing, when we can walk away laughing. Council Daniel?
I'd like to, thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I'd like to echo Council Nash and my fellow councillors as well, that tonight was really a very good meeting, and I think the nexus of it being a good meeting was the fact that we had citizens here tonight that were involved. We had a number of different issues that were important to the council, and we had citizen input tonight, a lot of citizen input tonight, and it's all valuable. I told you before that I would harp on this, I think it's important that citizens be involved in our government, and tonight was a classic example of that. I think we came to a good decision, I think we came to a well-thought-out decision regarding the standard operating procedure policy, and I think that's due in part to the fact that we had citizens that were helping in the discussion. And in terms of other issues that are going on in town, there's nine of us here, there's 17,000 people that live in town, and we can't be alert and aware of everything that's going on, and we need you to let us know what's going on. So please, again, there are committees that are open, that need citizen participation, and we also need to know what you're thinking about in terms of other issues that face